President.
Trustee Wilson. Trustee Vogt. Not here, not here. Trustee Saldivar?
Here.
Trustee Buzard?
Present.
Trustee Kane?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
I'm here. And Trustee Stoma? Not here.
I'm here.
Oh, yeah? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm here. Stuck in on you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so attending via Zoom as Chairman Stoma, thank you. Okay, we will now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Chancellor Castillo, could you please provide the certification as to posting, please?
Yes, sir. I certify that the posting of this agenda was done in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. And now, we have come to the portion of our meeting where we hear from the public. And Braxton, has anyone signed up for public comment today?
No, sir. No one signed up for public comment this evening.
Thank you. Anyone? No? Okay, thank you. So Chancellor Castillo, do you have any introductions, special guests, or recognitions, please?
I have some special guests, but we have action items for them, so I'm gonna...
Okay, yeah, definitely. We'll wait for that. Thank you. We'll now approve the minutes of the April 4th, 2024 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes, please? There a motion? And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, I have it. Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, so Chancellor, can you please let us know if you have any special reports or announcements?
I do. So we, I have a lot today, actually, so settle in, ladies and gentlemen. Let's start with the Start Gala. So we had the Start Gala on April 13th at the Woodlands Waterway Marriott. Is Nicole here? All right, I wanted to make sure I didn't steal Nicole's thunder like I did the last time. Because the best apology, ladies and gentlemen, is change behavior, so she's not here. Okay. We raised about $620,000, including almost 300... Yeah. Including almost $300,000 for food scholarships, which we announced at the Start Gala. So it was a really successful event. Really grateful for everyone that was able to come. It was a really special and nice night, so thank you. I know we had several trustees that were there as well. Appreciate y'all being there. We had the Chancellor's Open Forum, Watts, at Sci Fair on April 19th. And that was the end. That was the last one of season one, so taking the summer off, and then we'll start it back up at season two. We had the Veterans Association Rally Up 5K on April 26th at Kingwood. And not only did I participate, Board of Trustees, I finished fourth. All right. So, so, yes, they were quite surprised. They're like, is that the chancellor who's running? Yes, yes, it was me. I got fourth, and as my wife said, the people who beat me were about half my age, so... And I tried, man. I tried my little heart out to catch second and third, but I couldn't. They were too fast, so that was, that was great. We also had the Jack Can Cook Luncheon on April 30th, I think, just two days ago. And that was really nice. So we had a record 18 Jack Can Cook semifinalists. And what was really cool, Board, is that we gave, or promised, rather, every Jack Can Cook semifinalist $10,000, provided they don't become a finalist and get $55,000 for three years, right? So either way, just, just by being a semifinalist and being at that luncheon, each, everyone walked away with $10,000 at the very least. So that was really cool. And, you know, we've been having Chancellor's Food Distribution at all the LSC main campuses, and we're also gonna hit Houston North Victory. And it's been really cool. We gave away 1,800 lunches, for example, at Sci Fair. Yesterday, I was at Health Science Building. We had Tomball and Montgomery yesterday. And it's been really nice to sort of, I think, for our faculty and staff to see, to be able to help students in a very personal way. And just so the Board remembers, the money that we used for that was the money that we saved from not having a search for a CFO. We turned around and used that money to feed students, and so we spent the $80,000 that we would have spent on a search firm, on feeding students for free at every main campus. And so we've given away thousands of lunches at this point. And so between those scholarships from the gala, the food pantries that we've set aside a million dollars over the next five years, $200,000 a year, and these free food days, we're sort of really sort of trying to tackle food insecurity at Lone Star College. Forthcoming events, and this is where I don't think I have to remind people, but just in case, Memorial Day is May 27th, and the summer schedule begins May 28th. So if you show up on a Friday during the summer, you're gonna be very lonely, ladies and gentlemen, so... So those are the events. And then today, obviously, we've had a very, very busy day, very, very busy day. Because when it rains, it pours. So on Board Day, we had some intermittent closing for the day, but I wanted to announce, so that everyone hears it, that we're closing several locations. We've already sent out the message, but I want to make sure that everyone gets it. We kind of want to avoid what we did this morning, which is a sequential opening. So we've already announced that we're gonna close tomorrow. And I'm gonna read them from this list and make sure. At Tosca Cita Center will be closed tomorrow. Conroe Center will be closed tomorrow. Creekside Central will be closed tomorrow. East Aldine Central will be closed tomorrow. Health Science Building and Tomball will be closed tomorrow. The Kingwood Main Campus will be closed. Montgomery Main Campus will be closed. Process Tech Central will be closed. System Office, the Woodlands, will be closed. The Tomball Main Campus will be closed. And University Center, the Woodlands, will be closed. And so if you're looking for a unifying theory of why all those places have in common, they all are either really close to one of three bodies of water, the Trinity, Lake Livingston, or the San Jacinto River. And so if you're sitting there, you're like, why is my campus not closed? It's because you're not near one of those bodies of water. Having said that, the same email says, "As we have employees and students that live throughout the district, if your campus is open, please make a personal decision as to whether it is safe for you to travel. Do not drive through high water. If you cannot make it in, please contact your supervisor or professor. And for the campuses that are closing, consistent with the long tradition here at Lone Star, we will pay all of our part-time employees, even if we are closed, through no fault of their own." And that's all I have. Thank you.
Wow, that's a lot of stuff. Thank you, Mario. Good information. So now we get to hear from our Board President, one of our presidents. Please proceed to the podium. Dr. Friere?
Thank you, Vice Chair Murillo, Chair Stoma, Trustees, Chancellor Castillo. It's a pleasure to speak with you about Lone Star and what we are doing to shape futures in our community through workforce education. I want to frame my remarks in the context of Hospital Aid, which brought us the new community college funding model. Specifically, I want to call your attention to two outcomes under the performance tier, credentials of value and credentials in high-demand fields. These two outcomes are narrowly defined by the Coordinating Board and others to mean that it is a credential that has value in the market, and it has been deemed to have, to be in demand because of job postings or publicly available salaries. I will submit to you that I think that, I believe, that Lone Star is not only well-positioned to, with regards to Hospital Aid, but in fact, we are indeed at the epicenter of educating our 2.3 million residents in our service area. I want to call your attention to the 57 Associates of Applied Science degrees. These are credentials that prepare students to enter the workforce upon graduation. And on the other side, you see nearly 200 certificates. These are certificates that are continuing education certificates to college Level 1, Level 2, to advanced technical certificates that are available to our residents and will help them gain the skills that they will need to enter a pathway that will lead to a family sustaining wage. I want to put a finer point on this and share with you that, in fact, 44% of the students who enroll at Lone Star are actually on a workforce pathway. What I want to do now is I want to transition to the second part of my presentation, and I'm going to feature a sampling of the programs. And what you're going to see in the ensuing slides are a number of things. You will see the kinds of credentials that we offer in each of the disciplines that I will speak to. You will see whether it's a credential of value, in demand, you will see enrollments, you will see course success rate. You will also get to see the partners whom we work very closely to ensure that our students are well-connected and are well-prepared to enter the workforce upon graduation. So with that, let me begin with Sci Fair. At Sci Fair, we offer, it is the only campus that offers sonography. We have two credentials, Associates of Applied Science. It is indeed a credential of value, in high demand, and you see the enrollment and success rates and partners. I want to move to the next slide. This is a certificate that is offered through continuing education. It is a CNA certificate that prepares students to be a licensed CNA. Staying in the theme of the helping profession, at Houston North, we offer two Associates of Applied Science and two Level 1 certificates in human services. What I want to point out here is that the Level 1 certificate, you will see about halfway through this slide here, these students actually complete the practicum. And this practicum enables them to sit for the LCDC exam. This is the Licensed Chemical Dependency Counselor exam to enter the workforce. Next, I want to move to Kingwood. So at Kingwood, we have under-processed technology. We offer essentially four credentials. And these are credentials that are for students who are interested in entering any industry that has to do with the distillation, the distillation and material creation are sort of the primary focus. You see, there are party enrollments in these credentials, also a credential of value, and you see the starting salary. And the partners, I want to point out that BP has contributed a significant amount in scholarships for students in this program. Here next, at Montgomery, is the Land Surveying and Mapping Technology Program. What I want to underscore here is that in addition to having an Associate of Applied Science in this discipline, only in Montgomery, we also offer a certificate at North, at Houston North. A student who graduates with the Associate's credential in this discipline and takes a licensing exam and is a registered professional land surveyor without a bachelor's can actually earn a salary that is, that is at about, starting at about $90,000. Moving to North Harris and industrial diesel technology. I love this picture. I love the faces of the students. And by the way, all of the pictures that you're seeing in these slides are real students. They are our students. They are our community and whom we are serving. What is special about this credential is that students actually often go on to complete the Associate's degree in the Automotive Technology Program. So they leave us with two credentials in relatively three to four years. Again, another certificate that I want to highlight, because I don't want to simply present to you the Associates of Applied Science credentials, I also want to showcase a few certificates. And this one here is offered at North Harris through continuing education. And again, this credential allows students to be licensed and to work in this, in this discipline. Party enrollments as well, high demand and credential value. I want to transition to the Associates of Arts in Teaching. We have an in-person program, but for purposes of this presentation, I want to focus on the online program. It's relatively new, but what is really unique about the online program is that the, the student experience is a virtual, students can do this virtually. And this was a special request that was made to the Coordinating Board by Lone Star, and it was granted, and it really accommodates our working learners. I want to move to Tomball and feature the Veterinary Tech Program, which started in 1988. It's one of only 15 programs that is fully accredited in the state. The last program that I want to showcase is the Data Analytics Associates of Applied Science Certificate at University Park. Also a credential of value and a credential in high demand in the state of Texas. You should know that, starting in the fall, we are also featuring a, we are starting the Artificial Intelligence Associates of Applied Science credential, so we're very excited about that. I want to close by just giving you a very, a sneak peek of what's on the way. On the, on, on one side, you see programs in development, and you see that we are working on two continuing education certificates and a law enforcement Associates of Applied Science credential that will be offered at University Park. And on the left side, you see that my colleagues, presidents, and my colleagues at the System Office continue to work on creating new, expanding, modifying the programs that we offer our community to be able to earn a credential and earn a living and earned it, more importantly, a family sustaining wage. So with that, I close. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna hear from employee groups. Dr. Bergdahl, please proceed.
Could you see if we have questions, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me, let me go ahead and do that. If you don't mind, just give me a second.
Thank you.
Dr. Bergdahl? Yeah, yeah, I forgot to do that. Let's go ahead and ask questions. Thank you.
Great presentation, and I learned a lot, so I look forward to studying the information later to, to where it just kind of rolls off. But Chancellor, after the, after the presentation, how do you think that positions us for the first slide, which had the high demand, the, the two qualifications for increased funding? Where do you think we are? Where do you think we need to go?
So we're in a really good position, because we're actually, one of the main things that we are pushing back against is a cap on HB8 funding. There's been rumors and talk of capping us, because essentially, we may run away with so much of the bag that other community colleges might not get anything, or might not get as much as at least the THCB and other folks thinks that they should get. And so for us, the issue is a cap would be incentivize us from performing as much as we could and providing as much resources as we could. So we actually are trying to get that cap removed very, or removed, or make sure that the cap doesn't make its way into the final rules or anything like that. And so I think we're in really good shape with that. We have ranked all 117 of our current, 115 of our current programs. And they're ranked by demand in the Gulf Coast area and whether they align with a high-demand field under HB8. And that's under G5. And so now, when we have those discussions, like as Dr. Friere was going through those slides, I, I can almost tell you, for example, Process Tech is the highest-paid workforce program in the top 25. At $77,000, it is the single greatest pay scale. And so guess where we're investing money in over at Process Tech, making sure that those machinery work as we sort of close down programs and we look at where do we want to open programs? The higher on that list it is, the more likely it is that we're going to expand into that. And so along those lines, as I can tell that I have personally met with the Executive Director of Workforce Solutions, and we're in the process of opening up Workforce Solutions offices at our campuses. So the very first one will be Sci Fair. So you can go to Workforce Solutions, they give you the vouchers. You literally walk right across the hall, hand it over to the financial aid folks. We register for you for a high-demand class. They give you money to pay for the class, and then they help you get a job after you get the credentials. So we are, we are all set, sir. We're, we're in really, really good shape when it comes to sort of the workforce, and you're gonna see a lot of movement. I've also asked the same folks for a million and a half dollars to open up another dental hygiene program. Dental hygiene is number one on that 115 list. We can't train dental hygienists fast enough. The, the cost there, though, is those dental chairs. So I've asked the Workforce Solutions folks, if they can find a million and a half, we'll open up another dental hygiene program. And so that's how intentional we're being with sort of how we open up programs. The same thing, for example, with trucking. I've gone and sit out there. They have this really cool gong. If you've never been out there, when you pass the test, they get to ring a gong. And it's really cool to sit out there and watch them, because literally, when they come off of the truck, they are, they have their license. And so we're being really intentional about that. And so again, the really, the really big value proposition in workforce is gainful employment, and like Dr. Friere said, being able to meaningfully sustain a family.
This is a policy question, and I realize the cap is in flux and it could change, or maybe not be enforced at all. But we would not use the cap as a disincentive to continue offering these programs.
Correct. Correct. You know, we're here to serve students. And to be hon, and we've talked about this, and we talked about this at the retreat, right? Even, even HB8 funding, it's exciting to talk about, because it's changed the way that we fund community college systems. Right here at Lone Star, where you're talking about 20% of our total funding, and you're really talking about the delta in budget last year is about 1%, right? So we're not gonna stop doing things, because one, it would violate our mission. Two, we will get the credit hours, the contact hours, and the revenue from credit hours in the very immediate future, even if we don't get the HB8 funding, which is, again, a delta about 1% or 2%. We're not gonna give up 45%, which is what we get from student revenue in order to gain that 1%, right? And so we're, we're going more in on credit hour revenue than HB8 funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Just want to say, very good report. Enjoyed seeing the, the information, especially with it, with regard to the impact that the various degrees have on starting salaries. And I just wanted to ask if we could get a copy of the report?
Of course, sir. Braxton, will you make sure that the entire Board gets that PowerPoint, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I'd like to say it's a great report. I had one question. You said, I think I saw somewhere, said, did I see adult care or adult services somewhere?
You saw human services?
Yeah, I, something about adults.
Associates of Applied Science in Human Services. We have two Associate's degrees.
Okay, maybe that was, I don't know what I was thinking about, but anyway, you know, I'm gonna say this again. I keep... I can't remember. I just saw something that said adult, either adult.
Oh, adult learners. I was talking about the online Associates of Applied Teaching credential, and yes.
Yeah, and I was glad to see that, what was it, 44% of the workforce path? And the only thing I'd like to add, of course, I'm beating this drum again. I want to see Lone Star, since we are so great, I want to see us be the first to do something about senior citizen care. You know, that's my big thing. I am a senior. I don't hide from it. I'm proud of it, as a matter of fact. And we don't do, I, I have never seen, on all my going to all these conferences, anyone who ever said that a college had a program aimed at teaching nurses, aides, and all of these people who work in hospitals, how to deal with dementia, Alzheimer's, and all of this. It's nowhere. And of course, I've talked to L. Chancellor about this, but I'm bringing it up again. Nobody has ever, I don't see anybody doing it. And look, some of us at this table are seniors, you know, who knows? Eventually, we may need some help. I know I'm gonna need it, but anyway. I just would like to see Lone Star be, I, I don't know who workforce people are, if anybody listening to me. I want us to be on the forefront of this. I want us to be the ones to develop a workforce program that caters to seniors, where you train nurses, aides. A nurse's aide in a hospital is not the same as a nurse's aide who's dealing with somebody with dementia or Alzheimer's. If you've ever had a family member who's had it, trust me, it is not an easy job. And you know, even the best of people, but see, I don't think that people think we're gonna age, but we are going to age. I am aging. Some people may not be blessed enough to have adult children who will take care of them. I'm not saying mine will now, but I'm just saying, you know. But I, I think that, I don't know how we do this, but I think that would put us on the map, because I've had people from other colleges, believe it or not, email me from the conference and wanting to know what, I talked about it, what could they do with their ailing parent who was, you know, out of state? And because, see, we do need a trained force to deal, because octogenarians are the largest growing population there is. And somebody's gonna take care of us, you know, and I sure want somebody who knows what they're doing. So anyway, I'm just saying, you know, whoever's over workforce, you know, L. Chancellor, I don't know who I need to talk to, but...
Yes, ma'am. No, we're working on it. We are, we are working on it. The issue, the issue is, having looked at and read several reports about it, the issue is the wages. So we have to find an employer that essentially will pay these folks, because these are not actually, unsurprisingly, in very sad state of our society. They're not highly-paid jobs, right? And so part of, part of the difficulty is finding an employer that will pay a good enough wage that will justify the expenditure of the training itself. And so for a job that pays $12, $13 an hour, for example, most people will just, they will get themselves a job that pays $15, $16 an hour, you know, at the grocery store, doing something like that. And so that's really, the, the real big hurdle is finding an employer, but we're working on it. Because like I said, I'm meeting with Workforce Solutions myself, myself, to make sure that if we can find someone that will hire those folks, who will train them, and around the chambers, I've made this really clear. If you're an employer and you come to me and you say, I want to hire these folks, we will build a program just for you, because what we're about here is getting our students employed, so that they have something better than what they had before they come to us. And so for us, it's just really about finding employers. So I think that what we need help with is, let's find an employer, and then we can build a training program around that.
I knew you were on it, Chancellor, and that, and this will benefit the community, too. It will make Lone Star a player in all of our communities, because our communities are thirsting for this. They really are.
Yes, ma'am.
Well-taken. I will add that as part of HB8, adult learners are also prioritized. So as we continue to grow our programs, expand our offerings, we need to be thinking about not just training students to take care of a growing and aging population, but also be preparing for how we are going to educate an increasing population that will be adults. We haven't, we haven't quite mastered that in sort of the traditional higher ed structures that we have. So with that, thank you again.
If, if, yeah, if I may, just real quick, the type of data that you, I just wanted to share this with you, that, you know, if we want to develop a data culture here, we continue to do what you just did, you know, very robust, very good information about workforce. We have interesting questions come up. HB8 requires us to stay on top of that, so continue doing that. And one other thing I want to say, I was just sharing before the meeting with Mario, that my son's about to graduate with a degree in construction... with a degree in construction science, so I'm proud of that. But and just, he he told me he just finished his course in survey, construction surveying. So I'm a little hopeful now. Thank you.
Yes. Oh, yes. And it's certainly a field that is in demand right now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what he mentioned.
Dr. Ferrer, if I remember correctly, we have a championship survey team over at Montgomery, don't we? So not only do we teach people how to survey, but didn't we just win a championship?
Oh, wow.
Right? So congratulations. So yes, sir, there are competitions.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, now, Dr. Berg, now we can hear from you. I'm sorry about that. Can you proceed to the podium, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College. And as always, I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I have three topics I would like to share with you tonight, but please don't worry, all three are going to be very brief. First, I would like to offer congratulations on behalf of the union to two long term Lone Star College professors who will be honored tonight with the title of Professor Emerita. Annie Benefield, retired professor of political science from Tomball, and Joan Samuelson, professor of English from Kingwood, who will soon retire, have both served and inspired the students of our college for many years. In addition, both Annie and Joan have been active and dedicated members of the A F T for many years and exemplify the commitment to excellence that our union members share. I have known Annie many years through participation in union events. I have known Joan even longer, thirty two years, in fact. For a number of years in the nineteen nineties and early two thousands, my office was two doors down from hers at Kingwood. I don't think Joan is here yet. Annie is, but both of them are true joys. We will long remember you and I wish you both much happiness in your retirement. I want to turn my attention next to one of the concerns that popped up over and over again when A F T conducted our survey last fall and which also appeared in the survey the chancellor conducted. I want to highlight this concern, but at the same time, acknowledge and endorse the work that the administration is already doing to address that concern. The best way to exemplify what this concern is that I want to talk to you about tonight is by sharing with you an email I got from one of Lone Star's valuable staff employees this week. I'm going to edit this quote heavily to obscure both the department and the college where the employee works because my goal is not to point fingers at a specific area, but to illustrate a widespread problem and show how it impacts the well being of employees. So this is the email edited. Hi, John. I have a question for you about what tasks can be assigned to me. With the recent restructuring of my department, I have been tasked with a lot, and I mean a lot, of extra purchasing and staffing duties. My department has never had staff dedicated to these duties. They were handled by other departments. Apparently, they do not want to help us anymore, which I don't think is the case, actually. They've just, it's been reassigned. I completely understand their desire to only do their job. I am told we hope to get either a division operations manager or specialist, but at this point, that is a hope and not a promise. I have to tell you that I have been barely keeping my head above water since the last major reorganization. My recent health problems have not helped. I am afraid the new responsibilities are going to completely swamp me. And those last few words really touched me. That's the end of the email. In our survey, we heard concerns like this over and over from the staff side. Significant employee attrition paired with lack of success in recruiting replacements leading to the remaining employees taking on extra duties until they feel completely overwhelmed. In the most severe cases, we learned of departments that had dwindled down to one employee and one manager. The A F T is working how, on how we can help this specific employee, but a systemic solution is needed. Fortunately, steps are already being taken to turn this situation around. And part of that is thanks to you. You on the board took an important step in the process last month in authorizing the chancellor to develop flexible work options. Once in place, Lone Star will be a much more competitive employer, and I specifically want to thank you personally for this move. Also, Chancellor Castillo recently announced a partial freeze on hiring administrators to direct resources towards hiring more folks down in the trenches, doing the core basic work of the college. Employees like the one whose email I read need colleagues at their level to help shoulder those daily burdens. While not minimizing the work our higher level administrators do, moving personnel funds to focus hiring on the primary levels of service is the right move for the moment. Chancellor Castillo, you have the support of the A F T in this effort. Changing topics again, the third topic, which is lighter, I wanted to bring up this evening as a personal one. During the first summer session, I will be teaching a six P M. section of college algebra, Monday through Thursday. This is by my choice. I love working with non traditional students, the non, the non traditional students we have at night, and I'm looking forward to the class. The downside is that this class conflicts with the Board of Trustees meeting, so I will not be able to be with you all again until August. We, however, may have replacement speakers to take my spot. There are still open seats in this class, by the way. So if any of you here tonight on the board or out in the audience want to brush up on your factoring and your logarithms, please know that I would be honored to have you. Thank you all for your kind attention this evening, and I will see you in August.
Thank you, Dr. Bergdoff. Thank you, Dr. Bergdoff. Appreciate it. Colleagues, do you have any special reports or announcements to make? Anyone? Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say that I attended the Law Enforcement Academy graduation today. Dr. Kishvala, Dr. Gonzalez, it was really, it was standing room only. And it was a really great thing. One of my friends graduated as well, but just to see all the support for the cadets that were there and the ones that got their pens for their employment that they already received, it was really, really great. It was a nice program and I appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing that. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Go ahead, Dr. Someone, I mean, Jim.
The last thirty plus days have really been great in terms of the number of events that have been taking place across the college. The chancellor mentioned the Star Gala, which was outstanding. He mentioned that Jack Kent Cooke, semifinalists, eighteen, that I think ties the highest number of any community college in the United States, as I recall. In the L S C News Watch, saw the Take Flight STEM Pathway with Rice University. I think that's it's great to have that kind of partnership for our honors program students. I was able to attend the North Hare Scholarship Event on April sixteen, the Kingwood event on the eighteenth, the Fallbrook event on the twenty fifth, and was able to attend the Amadeus Play at University Park in the new theater, which is great, absolutely great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I wrote my comments, so I wouldn't deviate from them. They're short and they're positive. Okay, I'll just say that at the, at the outset. So Chair, thank you. We're all attending various graduation ceremonies with more to come. And I appreciate the support that I've received from the chancellor's office and campuses in arranging and finalizing the details. Also want to thank L S C Kingwood and Dr. Gonzalez for two outstanding ceremonies this week. She hosted them. One of, one was a partnership with the University of Houston downtown, and the other was the graduation of Law Enforcement Academy students. Trusty Ayers Wilson was there as well. I had a couple of other items to share, but I'm putting them aside for something positive that came up today, and that's why I wrote this down. While attending the annual fundraising luncheon for search, which deals with homelessness, housing and wraparound services in Houston, I ran into Rick Campo. Rick is chairman of the Port of Houston Authority Board, the Port Commission, and CEO of Camden Property Trust. He is also a vice president of, excuse me, Houston ISD Board of Trustees. I mentioned then that he and I were fellow trustees. He at Houston and me with Lone Star. And this is the good part. He immediately and proudly told me that his daughter was an adjunct with Lone Star and teaches geology. He spoke so highly of Lone Star College and the important role of community colleges in our communities. I could not have been more proud of Lone Star because I respect Rick Campo so much. This was a reminder to me that collectively and individually, we're all ambassadors for Lone Star College, and we can be very proud of our reputation that Lone Star has, and we can be very impactful in the community on an individual basis. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Very good, very good. Okay, by committee chairs, do you have any items to report on a related as related to your committees? Anyone wants to report on anything?
Yes, sir, if I may. Thank you. The Finance and Audit Committee is going to meet virtually tomorrow, and we'll have a report for the board next month.
Thank you. And same thing with our committee, Goals and Evaluation Committee will, will have a full report next, next month, once we complete our, our work. Okay, okay, now we're at the consent agenda, consideration of consent agenda. Chair asked to reconsider items number nineteen and twenty separately. Are there any requests to consider any other items separately, colleagues? No? Okay, so if there are no other requests to consider items separately, may I have a motion to approve items number one through eighteen and number, I'm sorry, and number twenty one? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Give me one second, sorry. May I have a motion to approve item number nineteen? Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Chancellor Castillo, please tell the board about the emerita, emerita process and our nominee, please.
Sure. So let me start first with thanking Dr. Benefield. She was one of the, she was actually the very first person that emailed me to ask me about this and said, what's, what's the status on this? And I'll be quite honest with you, I just become the chancellor, and I said, I don't even know. I didn't even know that I was involved. So let me find out exactly what this is about. So she's been incredibly patient with us because in the transition, sort of, this is one of the things that unfortunately got lost in the shuffle of of chancellors. So thank you for your grace on that. I appreciate it. So what I have learned since I became chancellor is that the faculty member or somebody else, in this case, Dr. Gilbert, sends a letter to the president, a nomination letter, and then the president recommends the faculty member to the chancellor. And then the chancellor convenes the emerita committee, and then the committee recommends the faculty member to the chancellor, and then the chancellor brings it to the board. That's how it works. So it's an incredibly sort of shared governance model. So Professor Gilbert, if you will come up and tell us, you were the person that nominated Dr. Benefield, I think it was about a year ago, year and a half ago, two years ago. There we go. Wow. Two years ago. So tell us why you did that, sir.
Sir. So first, I want to say good evening to Chancellor Castillo, Board Chair Stoma, Vice Chair Murillo, who's presiding, and all members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Patrick Gilbert, and I'm a professor of government at Lone Star College Tomball. I'm before you tonight at Chancellor Castillo's request to express my support for consent item nineteen, which is bestowing the title Professor Emerita to Dr. Annie Johnson Benefield. Having known Dr. Benefield for well over a decade now, I think, right? I can assure you that she not only meets, but exceeds the requirements to become a professor emeritus. She came to Lone Star College in nineteen ninety eight and remained a professor until her retirement in twenty twenty one. So while here, she served the college like no other. She held high expectations for her students and gave them the best possible education. She had high expectations, and her students knew that. They knew that she wanted her to read and come to class prepared. Throughout her career, she readily embraced the ever changing world of higher education, and she remained a lifelong learner. In twenty twelve, she became department chair for the social sciences and continued to serve in that role until her retirement. As chair, she hired and mentored numerous adjunct faculty, and some of them have gone on to teach at other institutions full time. I was a recipient of the mentoring that she provided, and there are three points that she always would say. Number one, remember that your primary goal, your primary responsibility at Lone Star is to teach. Don't deviate so much from that. Number two, never compromise your integrity, ever. And number three, taking the words from her late mother, she would always say, Patrick, what's for you is for you and you only. So don't worry about anything or anyone. So Dr. Benefield served on numerous hiring committees, several curriculum teams, the Committee for the Center for Civic Engagement, and she was a mentor in the Student Success Institute, or S S I, and she remains in touch with her mentee. Her desire to serve extends beyond the college, where she made history in so many ways. She was president of the Texas Community College Teachers Association, and she remains chair and CEO of the Foundation for Professional Excellence in the Community College, which is the T C C T A Foundation for short. Even more notable, she became president of the League of Women Voters of Houston. She was the first woman color to hold that position. In that role, her passion for civic engagement was on display to the entire world. She passionately registered voters all over the greater Houston area, including at naturalization ceremonies. She gave speeches everywhere, even virtually during the pandemic. And Dr. Benefield has been featured on local, national, including the Sunday morning talk shows and international news shows. So Dr. Benefield received the Lone Star College Tomball Faculty Excellence Award in twenty nineteen and was given a proclamation proclaiming May seventeenth, twenty twenty three, is Dr. Annie Johnson Benefield Day in the city of Houston. She's also the recipient of the Governor's Yellow Rose of Texas Award, and she's wearing her yellow pin there. This is the first time she's worn it since she's received the award. So without any hesitation, I express my full and complete support for you bestowing the title Professor Emerita to Lone Star College's own Dr. Annie Johnson Benefield. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but if not, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any, anyone have any comments? There's a lot, a lot of good stuff there. Thank you. Congratulations. Awesome. Okay, so let me see. Okay, so we already have a motion on the floor to approve this item. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Most? Motion carries. Thank you.
Chairman, can we have Dr. Benefield come up and say a few words, if it's okay?
Yes.
I don't want to put you in the spot. I really want to hear what, you know, what you have to say. We really.
I'm so happy to be here. I'm going to say a few things. Thank you so much. I'm humbled, honored, and grateful to be here. Thank you so much for recognizing this. Education is the most powerful weapon when you change the world. This is the means by which I constantly use my voice.
To effectuate change in the classroom and through my civic engagement work in the broader community. Two and a half months ago, I presented at Lone Star College Tomball, a presentation on during Black History Month on women of color involved in the struggle for suffrage. Students came up to me. I felt so emboldened and enlightened. I realized I missed teaching. Students came up to me afterward and asked questions and commented on what they had learned. So two and a half months later, Patrick sent me a note that one of his students had sent, and I'm gonna quote exactly what the student said in response to that. Dr. Benefield came to L S C and gave a presentation. It was the first time I ever was taught about the movement at school. It is almost unsettling to me because I would not be allowed to vote if it were not for those brave women many years ago. They're all so inspiring to me, and because of women like them and Dr. Benefield, I want to be able to carry the torch and continue the fight. That is what education does. That is the embodiment of why one would choose a career in education in the first place, and this is a long lasting impact. So as a result of that, that presentation and that student speaking in that way, it makes you know why you didn't choose education. Education sort of chose, chose you as that. So I want to say, express my. So I want to say, express my sincere gratitude and, and say that I'm deeply honored that you've decided to bestow this extraordinary tribute on me and only being the seventh professor, uh, at the Lone Star College system and the first professor from Lone Star College Tomball, which is pretty extraordinary in itself. Again, thank you so much. And as I said previously, the, this is emblematic of what education is and its resonating and amplifying impact in society, to have educators who touch the lives of students. And it seems that Lone Star College is totally committed to the idea of doing that. Thank you.
So I'm gonna walk with my bike. So we actually, um, it's the first time, so you're gonna have to indulge us, right? We're still working out some of the logistics. So we do actually have something for you, ma'am. We wanted to make sure we had something to at least hand you. And for the rest of you, we are gonna have a party, yes, in August, right? So we want to make sure that we get a picture. If you'd like to have your family come up here, that would be fine, okay, too? No? Yes? Uh, we're gonna put the mic down. Okay, I told you it was my first time.
Oh, up there? We're gonna go this way? Oops, it's okay, don't worry about it, you're fine. Go on, your mic back.
I got it right here.
As I was saying, for the board, you will receive, and everyone will receive a follow-up invite, um, we are gonna have an emerita party at Tomball in August, once the faculty come back. Um, and as I've explained to my staff, some of my staff said, you know, well, um, some of our recipients said, I've already had a party. I had my retirement party. Well, emerita has to mean something special, right? So you get two parties if you get emerita. So we look forward to celebrating you, Dr. Benenfield, in, in August. And make sure you don't leave, because there's one more surprise for you. So hang tight. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, uh, may I have? May I have a motion to approve item twenty? We have a motion, second. We have a second. Uh, Chancellor Castillo, please tell the board about our nominee.
Yep, so we have two, we, we have two folks, and they're from Kingwood, so they're actually waterlogged, so I think they should be virtual. So let's start with the nominator. Professor Davis is, I think, joining us from Zoom, as is Dr. Samuelson. So, Dr. Davis, go ahead, sir.
Hi, thank you, and apologies, uh, we couldn't be there in person today. We experienced some significant flooding in the first half of the day in our area. Uh, to the Board of Trustees and Chancellor Castillo, uh, it is my great honor to nominate for emeritus designation Joan McInich Samuelson, Professor of English at Lone Star College, Kingwood. Uh, she will retire following spring term twenty twenty-four after a long and distinguished career at Lone Star, beginning in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, she has touched the lives of so many students, coworkers, and community members. She, more than anyone I have known, is both a former student here at Lone Star and a professor at our college, is deserving of emeritus status. Uh, her roots in our community run deep, um, in addition to being a founding faculty member at Lone Star College, Kingwood. Uh, she's also a graduate of Umball High School. Uh, this year, she received her pin for forty years of dedicated service at Lone Star College. During her tenure, uh, Joan has won two Faculty Excellence Awards, served as Faculty Senate President, twice served as Department Chair. She's also won numerous awards for innovation and faculty fellowship awards, uh, helped launch the Honors College, and was a pioneer in online learning. However, Joan's most important contribution is the impact she's had on our students. In the classroom, she's regarded as one of the most popular and engaging professors our institution has ever known. Uh, she's taught a range of English courses, as well as upper division courses in British literature. In addition, she has built courses outside the curriculum, including Holocaust literature, film and literature, courses on women's writers, uh, which have provided special opportunities for the intellectual and personal development of our community college students. Students eagerly anticipate her yearly schedule of courses and fill up those classes in faculty, even audit her classes. Joan is the most outstanding educator I have known in my twenty-five-year teaching career. She manifests not only intellectual curiosity every day, but also embodies the values of LSC. Importantly, her approach to teaching has not remained static, but rather adaptive to the ever-changing times and conditions, and never was this more evident than during her heroic efforts to assist faculty and students at LSC, Kingwood, during the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. Yet one thing remains constant, her unwavering devotion to her students, colleagues, and the profession. And I'll just take a, a personal point here. I was Joan's student, um, back in nineteen ninety-four. I was a college dropout. I'm a graduate of Umball High School, like Joan was. I went to the University of Texas, fell by the wayside, and I showed up in Joan's classroom, and in many respects, I've never left. Um, she rescued me, um, helped me not only finish college, but go on to earn my own PhD. And, uh, now I'm following in her footsteps here at Lone Star College, hoping to fill those shoes and become a mentor to so many faculty and students that she was to me. In that respect, my success and the success of so many of our students and her colleagues here, uh, is very much her own. So I wholeheartedly, and I know I speak on behalf of her colleagues, her students, both former ones and present ones, uh, endorse her nomination for emeritus status, and I would kindly ask you to bestow this honor on her uh, as a reflection of all of her years of hard work and dedication for the, for this institution. Thank you.
Hey, colleagues, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank, congratulations.
So I think, Chair, we also have Dr. Samuelson online, so the board can hear from her.
Are you there, Dr. Samuelson? Would you like to say a few words? No?
All right, well, just, Chair, if you'll indulge me, um, because of the weather, we're gonna have both Professor Davis and Professor Samuelson here next month, uh, so that they can get their picture as well. And so I just wanted to make sure, I've, again, I've learned my lesson. I want to make sure we didn't make, uh, this professor wait another year or two, and so I wanted to make sure that we put it in front of the board, so that the board would approve it, um, and we will extend the same courtesy and honor to her that we have to Dr. Benenfield next month.
Thank you, Chancellor Castillo.
And I just have one last announcement.
Yeah, please.
So, um, you know, Professor Davis has educated me on the importance of gaining this. It was something that, to be quite honest with you, I don't, I didn't really understand. I didn't really sort of appreciate it, and he was one of the people that educated me on the importance of it. And so over the last month, month and a half, we've really sort of been working on what could we do to sort of really make this special? And so we put our heads together, and this is what we came up with. Um, I'm happy to announce that, starting this year and henceforth, uh, every, every faculty member that receives this title will also get a fully endowed scholarship in their honor, so that for time immemorial, someone will receive a scholarship of your name. And so both of the recipients today will receive that scholarship endowment in their honor, and we expect you, hopefully, to be able to join us at those donor, uh, breakfasts, because, those donor lunches and those donors' breakfasts, because you will be treated just like any other donor, uh, because you've donated so much of yourself to this institution. So thank you on behalf of Lone Star, and you two are exactly the type of faculty member that I show up to support every day. So thank you.
Congratulations, the fourth of our honors. Thank you.
Uh, Chancellor Castillo, if, if I may, I just got a text from Joan. She was trying to, uh, to speak. I think maybe she had a technical difficulty. Um, she might have been muted. Um, we can try again. I don't know, Joan, if you're there? Unmute. Well, we tried.
Adam, can we get an update? Is she there? Okay, we're working through.
She is, she is attending the Zoom. She is here.
At the stall of a store. It doesn't look like we'll, oh, you got it?
Hello?
There you go. Haha, welcome, welcome.
Wait, 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 just a minute. Here's what this says. The host is not allowing participants to unmute themselves. That's what happened. So I ignored it, and that's.
Go ahead and proceed. Thank you for joining us.
So it was, it was definitely a technical problem, but somebody else, huh?
Go ahead and proceed. No, I was just welcoming you and thank you for joining us. Can you hear us?
I am here, but now I have no, I can't see anybody, and I can't see anything. There is something wrong with the equipment on my end, anyway.
Could be the weather, could be a lot of things.
I. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Yes.
You can't see me? Uh, we have a public safety alert in Kingwood right now. Maybe we can do this another time, because I don't see anybody.
You can't hear us either?
I just hear you. I can't see.
We can hear you perfectly clear. If you would like to say a few words, we, we are hearing you right now.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm looking, understand, I'm looking at a black screen, okay?
We're here, believe me.
Totally blacked out. Okay, so, so I will, okay, and we'll just, just under, you can see me or hear me, or just hear me.
Well, uh, just hear you.
Okay, yeah. Um, all right. First of all, I wanted to thank John Bergduff. Uh, I haven't seen him in a while, but he's a dear friend, and I thank him for his, for his kind words. Um, I was actually going to talk about Chris tonight, and now I, I want to even more. Chris, I'm, was sitting here with tears in my eyes the whole time. It was probably the most beautiful thing that anybody's ever said about me. And, uh, I'll never forget it, and I want a piece of that. I want a copy of that. Um, what I was going to do was thank several people, but I was going to turn to Chris. I am forty years, uh, at nineteen eighty-four with our campus at Kingwood, and I owe so much to the people who were our administrators. So I wanted to spend the time that I'm allotted thanking Lester Burks. Uh, we lost him a few years back, but he was the sweetest, kindest man and a wonderful first president. And Nellie Thoroughgood, who was his aide and the better, and also a president of the college, uh, who's very special to all of us who were there at that time. And the, and the friends that we made, and we literally, together, that group of maybe thirty-five faculty and staff, and the two of them, we literally built a college out of the woods, uh, literally out of the woods. We had deer in the parking lots when we went out at night after camp classes, and we talked, we talked mornings and noon and nights, and sometimes till ten o'clock at night, and then turn around at seven-thirty in the morning. It was exhausting. We even, we were at registrars and, and enrolled students in the, in, um, the gyms and helped out with that. We did a little bit of everything. And we brought this college forward, and it's our pride and joy. Almost all those people are gone now, um, except for me and Steve Davis, who's also here tonight, and my dear friend. And we're the last ones of the nineteen eighty-four founders of the college. So I wanted to recognize them deeply. And, uh, and I wanted to also point out that some, some of us are single parents out there for, for all kinds of reasons, and we didn't think it was gonna turn out that way, but it did. And so we have a special need here to be able to work a job that we love and have worked for all our lives, and also be able to raise our kids and provide for our kids. So when Lone Star, at that time, Kingwood College, hired me, I had been teaching high school. I loved the kids, but it wasn't what I wanted to do. And so when the college opened in eighty-four, they opened up the world for me and my son. I was able to take care of him the way I wanted to. I was able to send him to the University of Texas and off on his own career, and so I'm grateful for that as well. And I have a special appreciation for how they helped me do this. I also wanted to make a comment about Chris, and I was, I know I don't, I'm not allowed to talk very long, but I wanted to say this. Chris sets aside, um, through his humility, his, his own, uh, background, but in addition to graduating from Umball High School and, um, and coming and serving us, he was, he was my student, I think, in a couple of classes, and one day he walked up to me and said he wanted to be my TA. Well, I said, Chris, we don't have TAs and don't pay them for the professors, and he said he didn't want to be paid, he just wanted to learn. And so he came to every single class, and then he worked with the students on Friday and answered questions and clarified things, and he learned. This young man went on to several degrees, not least of which, of course, was the doctorate in, from Oxford University in history, and the work that he did overseas on so many different levels. And then he came back to be with us, and we're so grateful that he is, because he's absolutely extraordinary. He is, I know we sound like this mutual slapping on the back, but he really is, um, he's the son and nephew of dear friends of mine at Umball. He worked his way through school as a ref, a basketball referee. He made up a, a whole job in, in working with my students, but didn't ask for anything, but was content to keep working as a referee. And then he went off and set the world on fire in Europe, and then came back and, and has graced us with his presence. He is the best student I have ever taught, and I have had some great students at Lone Star, Kingwood. He is, and, uh, and he is a brilliant professor, and the students love him, and he's, he's home where he belongs with us. And I know he's gonna make everyone proud the rest of his life. So I may have gone along a little too long, but I couldn't, I couldn't find it, find you, and I'm still looking at a black screen, and I wish I could see you, but thank you for inviting us. Thank you for inviting us tonight, and I hope I do get to see you later on this summer. Thank you very much. Signing off.
Yes, Dr. Dr. Samuelson, uh, we are all delighted, we're all delighted you were able to join us. We heard your loud. We're all delighted you were able to join us. We heard you loud and clear. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Sure. Great, great. Okay, so I guess we now can move to the next item on the agenda, which is the financial report. Dr. Vian, please proceed to the podium for your financial report.
Wow, what a tough act to follow and talk about finance, so it's an honor. Thank you all for your service, and thank you for reminding us of why we're here. And when we have difficult days, why it's so important for what we do. So thank you for your service, and thank you for being such an inspiration. And this is probably the third event I've had this week where I've said, told trustee Pierce, I think I need tissues. So start carrying them with me, right, all the inspirational stories. So now let's talk about finances. So looking at your report and in the book that you have.
Check the button down there.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, I'm back. And looking at the financial statements, as a reminder, this is the month ending in March thirty-first of 2024. And what you are looking at is a comparison versus this time last year. So as of ending of March thirty-first, we are at $459 million in revenue, which is compared to the $419 that we would have received at this time in 2023. And we therefore have received ninety-one point four percent of our expected and budgeted revenue for the fiscal year. Tax revenues increased by right at almost $3 million from the prior month for additional tax payments received, as collections do tend to slow this year. But that was an increase as well as investment dollars, which you will see more detail shortly. Again, financial expenditures with ending March thirty-first still continue to track lower than in previous years, with only fifty point three percent of our expected expenditures actually utilized as far as the month end. So $225 million have been expended as of this closing. Looking at the financial statements and a little bit more deal as a breakdown of revenues, you can continue to see, we now show you the forecasted budgeted variance. That column shows you what the difference is between what was actually budgeted and what was actually received or not received in some cases. State appropriations continues to be above eight point four of our forecasted variance. And taxes have trended down, as I indicated last time. We are receiving 6.3 million less in tax revenue than we had originally budgeted. That's not necessarily anything that is done wrong or anything that is going to change. That really just has to do with when we receive approximated rolls versus what is actual rolls when they close the books in October through appeals process and other things. So I just wanted to make that clear. Also, we don't typically budget a lot for investment income, and because we can't rely on that, because that is something that will trend up and down. So investments continue to be budgeted at one million, though we've received thirteen million a year to date. When we look at budgeted expenditures, there's really nothing significant or no significant trends that have trended differently from a previous year. So we have total expenditures of 224 million as of March thirty-first. You also have in your board packet the construction report, as well as a more detailed financial statement. Happy to entertain any questions or wrap up the financial report.
Holly, anyone?
Thank you, trustees.
How about it, report, buildings and ground report?
It is in your record, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, guys. The Board of Trustees, in accordance with Section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code, will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions of the Act. Section 551-071, Section 551-072, Section 551-074, and Section 551-076. Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah. I think we're, we've done all our business today. So, you know, we're gonna go into executive session right now, so we're just gonna close it in formality. So thank you all for joining us. You all don't have to stick around, but of course, you're welcome to. Thank you so much. I reconvene this board meeting at 8:33 PM. Colleagues, any suggested future items, agenda items? Being none, with no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at 8:33, 8:33 PM. Thank you. PM.